Fall River Committee on Economic Development and Tourism will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please read the rolls.
Counselor Kudine. Counselor Lam.
Yeah.
Here, Counselor Kudine is on his way. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Item one is citizens' input. Is there anybody that would like to come down and address the committee?
Nope.
Item two, we have the minutes of the May 28th meeting.
Do you send us to the full council floor, or do we accept them? We accept them? All right. Motion to accept the minutes of, what is it, of the May 28th meeting?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So voted. Item three, the resolution requesting that administration, along with the Director of Facilities Maintenance, provide information and potential funding to provide electrical cabinets to handle electrical needs at the gates of the city. If we could have the administration and Mr. Gallagher join us, please. I need a motion to lift it from the table, Counselor.
Motion to lift from the table?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chris, I saw that you just, um, it's just an email here from this afternoon, and now I'm trying to find it. Just had it come over here.
Right, so.
You sent an update at 20 after 4:00. Can you just, I don't know who Melissa or Becky Kelly are, can you just?
She's the clerk in my office.
Yep.
So we've been going back and forth with National Grid. We had some paperwork for easements, deeds, things of that nature. That's the standard for National Grid. With that, it's gone to the engineering department. Also, in one of the documents that I sent yesterday, there was a text message that I made copy of and sent to you, showing that was Ann Malli, government's account rep, stating that Mr. Dougherty, who is the engineer on this project, was on a special project, and he's wrapping that up.
Okay, that's what that is?
Yeah, and then this email confirms that the engineering department is wanting to start to engineer and be able to give us a quote of what the costs are going to be for the National Grid piece. Also, within that, I gave you some quotations of what we went out for, like our portion would be, all of it's our portion, but meaning what we were going to install in the gates.
It's not me. I don't know what that is.
Me.
Something over there? Oh. That's all right. I thought it was over there.
So that portion was the, the quotes were for what we were going to install in the ground. Most of the other things would be coming from National Grid. Transformer pad, we have to buy from National Grid. It's their outline of what they use, and then the transformer, obviously, we'd be buying from National Grid. The rest of the work, we would pay for, but National Grid would be doing. So if they're going to pull the lines in the street, if they're going to have to run conduit in the street, that'd be something that National Grid would do. We would have to pay for it, but that's something National Grid would do.
So this quote for the $20,000 is?
For materials to put actually in the gates, in the grass, the panels, things like that. There's some things that are missing there, which would be concrete pads that we would, we'd make on our own, things of that nature. But that's for most all the conduit. It's for all the wiring. That's for the main cabinets that we have. We have two cabinets, a 200-amp service and a 400-amp three-phase service.
And then you said there was additional items we'd be buying from National Grid?
Yes, we would be buying the transformer pad, and the transformer from National Grid would roughly, I want to say around $40,000. But again, I'm waiting on National Grid to give me the exact price. This is just an estimate of what we've seen in the past for transformers.
And this is, this would cover everything? We wouldn't have to upgrade somewhere down the line?
No, this is what we did when we had, we've had these discussions with council and stuff, is that we wanted to make sure that whatever we put in there was going to be able to handle anything that we put in the future. So the three-phase system handles the big events, like the Day of Portables, and some of the Blockapalooza's they've had down there with the big bands. But we also have a 200-amp service that will also have, which will, some of the smaller events that we've just had, matter of fact, we have a food fest, a truck fest coming up. It would handle any of those things with bouncies and all of that stuff, and a small band, if they wanted, would handle that part. So we're trying to cover all ends. One side already has a 200-amp service. We're trying to now put power to the other side of the gates.
Okay.
And Counselor, just to add to that, Mr. Gallagher can probably elaborate. The largest unknown is going to be the actual installation and running the lines, right, depending upon where the power is coming from National Grid?
Anawan Street.
And the parameters, right? If it has to come in all the way from Anawan Street?
Mm-hmm.
It's going to be much more costly than if it's already available close to the gates. So I don't know if you want to provide?
Do you have any?
Those parameters?
Yeah, I don't have any of that. As you see in the email, that National Grid will come with us in a service there. When we get into that a little bit further, we may be able to make some adjustments. Instead of if we were coming on Anawan and then having to turn up water and then Ponte de la Gata, we may be able to do an easement like we did when we did the sewer lines that we came right across the back of the gas company and come in there, which may save us some expenses. We actually contacted a couple of the companies, some of the events that we have are willing to come down and help us to dig the trenching and stuff like that for us.
But I just think it's important for the council to realize that beyond the material costs, you know, the estimated $40,000 and the estimated $20,000, this installation piece?
We have no rough idea.
Could be very expensive.
That's why we're waiting on the National Grid piece.
So that could dramatically skew the ultimate cost of the project, and we won't know that for now, so.
Okay. And depending on where they can bring it from?
Right.
Okay. And he said he's almost finishing on a special project?
Yes.
And did it give you any idea? It says as soon as he is done, the gates is on his list, but we've been, I know you've been in contact with them for a couple of months now, correct?
Yes.
So... They only have one person that does these projects?
This particular one, for this particular area. This engineer handles this, this region.
Okay. Okay. Counselor, do you have any questions?
I'm just, I'm just a little perplexed that we don't have a, um, an idea of what it would be, even if it were a worst-case scenario. What are we talking about? Again, I'd be guessing at it, because right now, they're telling me that they think the nearest three-phase service they have, without really investigating, and they haven't done that yet, is on Anawan Street. So if they were to go, like I said, down Anawan, across water, up to Ponte de la Gata, that could be a huge expense if they have to lay new lines in. They need to look at and spec-
So what's a huge expense?
Well, digging up the road.
No, what, money-wise, what's a huge expense? How can you say it's going to be a huge expense if we don't have any idea what it is?
I can just guess at, just by what they have to do with, by digging in the roads. If they don't have conduits, spare conduits in the road, and they have to dig up the road, police details, backhoes, re-asphalt in the road, I mean, there's somewhat of an expense there. I couldn't even begin to speculate on how much that's going to cost, but I can tell you, it's not going to be cheap for them.
Do we have any money set aside for this?
We do not.
Do we have any money to do this, if we decided to go forward?
I think, as with any, I think as with any project, we would look at the capital needs, we would look at the capital plan as it currently stands, and see where this would fit into the total financing. We, again, as Mr. Gallagher just indicated, has, have no idea of the cost. So, I mean, we could be talking a million dollars, we could be caught talking $100,000, and it's $100,000, it makes a big difference than if it's a million dollars, so.
No doubt.
Mr. Gallagher does have funding to deal with his expenses on the Gates property, the approximate $20,000, so he has that money. But the additional funding is what was not budgeted, and because, again, we really didn't know the cost.
Which is all National Grid.
Right. Yeah, it's really National Grid is driving those costs, so we were unable to budget for that, because we just had no idea what the scope would include.
It's amazing to me that we don't know where these major electrical blocks are in that area. It just doesn't make sense.
Again, National Grid has to tell us that, Counselor, so.
They don't, we don't even have where the streetlights lie. We have to rely on National Grid. We don't have the plans. They won't give up the underground plans for all of these, so we have to rely on National Grid to tell us where the undergrounds, even for streetlights, are.
Yeah, well, play you.
When you say that you have the money in your budget, was it put in there? I'm trying to remember when we started this conversation. Was it before July 1st that we started this conversation? So what, or the money that's in your budget for this?
Yeah, the money, yeah.
Is it specific to this, or is it going to be taken from something else?
No, it's going to be taken from my electrical account.
And is there money in there for whatever else you have to do?
Yes.
Besides this?
Yes.
And what about the, um, the equipment for National Grid, that $40,000? Is that in there, though?
No, that, and again, that will be, again, will go and coincide with what they're going to do with the street piece, and what they come up with, with an estimated price, because I'll get that roughly, again. I'm going on based on what I know, what transformers have cost us in the past. I know what a concrete pad is going to cost. So those numbers I knew. It's what they're going to tell us of what it's going to cost for the street work part of it. That will be then added to that cost, and we'll have an overall cost of the rest of the job.
Do you have any idea when, um, when this gentleman's available, how long it would take him for this project, to come up with the estimates?
I think, I, if, once he starts on it, I don't think it would take him but a couple of weeks.
But we don't know when he's off this other project?
No. That's why we keep staying in contact with them. We get the emails periodically. We have to sometimes generate an email to them to say, hey, can you let us know where you're staying?
Okay. We just don't want to put it back on the agenda until we have more information, really?
Next piece is given.
Soon as, yeah, soon as we get that piece, we'll send it to you.
Okay.
And then we can decide whether we want to proceed with just the two-phase, or go to the three-phase, or whatever we're going to do, all that type of stuff. So next time we talk about this, it's going to be all broken down as to?
Exactly, all the expenses.
All right. Your real counsel?
I'm good.
You want to?
Your motion to table, I guess.
Let me see if Counselor Kudine, because this was his resolution, has any questions?
What's up? Just getting ready to table the gates, but since it was yours, so.
Do you want to ask any questions, since it was your resolution?
We don't have the final numbers on any of the National Grid stuff.
So nothing new, then?
If you look at the email I received around 4 o'clock this afternoon, it's letting them know that, um, that they're, it's in engineering's hands, and they would be able to give us a proposed price and a service agreement as soon as they're done designing it.
They say along, roughly?
No, again, if you look in the packet that I gave yesterday, there's a text message from Ann Malli, our government's account rep, that he was on a special project, and he's finishing that up, and that is the next on his agenda.
So they're just looking at the transformers, at the pad?
Yeah, but they're looking at where the three-phase, they're telling me it's in Anawan, but they don't know exactly how far they're going to have to go, if there's spare conduits, dig up the roads, or anything like that, yet. So once he gets it all engineered, we'll be able to go from there.
Okay. So motion two?
Motion two, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So voted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four is a resolution to convene with the administration, corporation counsel, Sandy Dennis, and a designee from the Creative Arts Network, and a representative for the Mass Cultural Commission, to discuss the development of a cultural district.
Yeah, and Madam Chairperson, we do have Michael Sullivan from the Fall River Chamber of Commerce, and he's also involved with the Fall River Arts Council, so if we could include him in the conversation. Mr. Sullivan?
We've got one, two, three, four, five, but they all work.
They work, and they're all on constantly. You can't play with them.
Yeah, but you're always checking to see which, you've got the wire, which one. Actually, we can go like this. Is that going to make it all the way to the end of the table?
I don't think so.
Before we start, if everybody could just give their name and address for the record, please?
Dave Dennis, 132 Highland Avenue.
Sandy Dennis, Creative Arts Network, 132 Tyler Davenport, Fall River.
Michael Sullivan, Chamber of Commerce, 200 Pecassett Street.
Louis Goto, Mass Cultural Counsel, 280 Harvard Street, Cambridge.
So, um, Mrs. Dennis had come to me a couple of months ago now, want, with this proposal. We, she, at that time, she had the, um, the approval from the mayor, and then we had met with corporation counsel and the city administrator, and they had additional questions. I believe when the mayor approved it, he just kind of approved an overall piece without asking anything. I know they asked you more questions, but you sent a detailed email answering, um, which I have a copy of, if anybody else needs a copy of. And Ms. Dennis, if you just want to give the committee just a brief overview?
Okay.
Could you pull the microphone in front of you?
Don't, yeah. Don't want to drop this copy again. So there's a lot of different levels to this district, and we've been working on it for five years. We started with Mary Jenkins, with Mass Cultural Counsel. Then it kind of floundered due to the different administrations that we had to turn over with. And then this year, we continue to work with Mary diligently to get this done, and Mary left, and Louis stepped in, so we've been actually working with Louis to get this district formed. There's lots of moving parts to it. We had to fill out an application, and we had to get not letters of approval, but just support. So the mayor's letter was actually a support letter. He didn't approve anything for this. He just gave us his support and endorsement of a district. So no approvals have been done yet. We've gotten support letters from other individuals as well. So I'm not sure if you have specific questions for us, or if you want us to talk about anything specific. And Louis is here to kind of answer the technical questions for you that you have. I know that he had sent an email. I can go through some of the information that we provided you. I've got some extra information, so that you'll have it as well. But we gave you a list of the contacts, which would be myself, my husband Dave, and Louis. That's who's been working on facilitating all this. And I do want to make it clear that this isn't a grant that Creative Arts Network is applying for. We were approached by the cultural council to facilitate and work to get Fall River a cultural district, and that's what we were tasked to do, and that's what we did. So we're not getting any money from this at all. We've put out a lot of money in time, but not getting any back. Then what I supply you with is the actual management team to date for this proposed cultural district, and it is a proposed cultural district, and you'll see that there are a lot of community leaders in this district, and also individuals that sit on particular committees, such as the Historical Commission, the local cultural council, we have representative there, we have... Which, what are you referring to? Which document? I've given, no, you didn't get it. We don't have that.
No, we did.
It's management team, everyone should have.
You should have something that looks like this.
Yeah, it's in the packet. Or halfway down.
It should be, yeah.
Right there.
The management team.
I don't have that.
Like this one?
Nope.
Okay, you know what? Pass these down. I've got extras, don't worry. Yeah, I've got some extras.
No, I just, I just have your information, Sandy, Dave. This is the packet that you gave.
So I'll give you some extra. Here you go. Just pass these down. This way the three of you can at least...
Do you have that?
No, there's not, it's not there.
Yeah, no, Mike's been on it since the beginning.
I didn't see it. I have this.
Do you want all new, fresh packets?
I just wanted to know which, what you were referring to.
Okay, this is, I gave you a copy just now of the management. You got it? Okay.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. So that's the management team that's in place now, and obviously, everything is fluid. So as, if the, and when the district gets approved, other people that want to sit on the management team can. The team welcomes as many people as we can, so that we can keep this district alive and moving. What I'd like to do is kind of have Louis talk a little bit about the reason that a city or town has a cultural district, and the importance of it to a city or town, especially a gateway urban city, why they're so important. And I know that there was some concern that, you know, we already have an arts overlay district, and the arts overlay district does overlay on this district. And that's a plus, because it only supports and helps build on the assets in that district. So always, Steve, I'll get you one of those.
No, I'm not.
Yours is a little wet. Take it, just go to that one.
So where's, I'm sorry, where's the district?
The arts, you don't have that either?
It doesn't have a, we don't have a map of it.
Sean, take that. I'm going to give, give this to PM.
Oh, he's just going.
You got everything?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Okay, so you'll see there's two maps in there. One is, Sean, the one you have is the...
Cultural.
The, nope, that's, indicates the overlay, the arts overlay that overlaps what is the proposed district. So you'll see on the tip of that, there's a little section, that's the extension of the cultural district. So...
This one over here?
Yeah. That, so the cultural district, if you go to the first map, so go to the first map, that's the proposed cultural district.
Okay.
Okay? And then the second one just shows how the arts overlay just overlaps on that district.
A piece of it.
Yeah.
Which is the waterfront piece, the other.
Basically, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, yeah. It's the waterfront.
So...
So the proposed cultural district is all of the waterfront, from Columbia Street, all of Columbia Street, from South Main to Broadway. Then it goes up, heads north, up to Water, goes down Ferry, so that the assets of the marina and the restaurants down there are included. Then it includes all of Water Street, the gates of the city. Then it goes beyond, up Anawan, but not as far as De Vauld Street. It only encompasses that small cluster of mills over there. Goes up the street to include Heritage State Park. Then you walk the boardwalk to Bicentennial Park, Commonwealth Landing. And the reason, it was a democratic process on how the district and the name was selected. There were boards put up, there were suggested names of the district, and then, of course, other. So people got to put a check on what they wanted, and if they didn't like anything, they could put their own name and check it. Then we had the original district, which was basically just a Heritage State Park. Then someone wanted it to go further, so we put that as an option. Just about everyone chose the district to go to Commonwealth Landing. And the reason for that was because of the boardwalk, because of the project on 79, and all the redevelopment that's going to go there. Commonwealth Landing and the art and culture inventory that they have in there, Brian Fox, they have Duke's Bakery, they have the restaurant, plus the fact that Bicentennial Park has the memorials, plus the Vietnam Veteran Wall that's going to be coming there. So we walked, David and I and Louis walked the district, and I think you found it somewhat impressive?
Yeah.
And it isn't our choice to decide what the district is. It's the Mass Cultural Council that will determine what the district looks like. We won't have that choice. We won't have that choice. It goes to their board. That's why the formal site visit's so important, because their whole team will come down here, and they will meet with the administration in the morning. Then they go on the formal walk and walk it. Then they have, then we have the, they have the public conversation meeting at Heritage State Park to get citizens' important questions answered at that point. But what I'd like to do is kinda turn it over to Louis and kinda explain a cultural district and the importance of it, and why MCC liked that area for a cultural district. Because the city can have as many cultural districts as they want. Every neighborhood can have their own cultural district if they want to go through all of this. It was a grueling process, a long process, a detailed process. But anyone can do a cultural district in the city. We don't have to have just one.
So if we could, just before we hand it over. So I think the, personally, the layout of the district that's proposed is one that's really interesting to me. I think that's really what we've talked about the entire time when we started talking about the waterfront and trying to incorporate that. And just, I know we had item three just, you know, tabled with regards to the gates of the city. We're trying to get the additional electric over there so that can be utilized. So to me, this makes sense, just in terms of the partnerships that we have to have. So is it Creative Arts Network that's the, gonna be the partner for the city for Mass?
They're gonna be, right. They'll, Creative Arts Network, we're a nonprofit, 501(c)(3). We will be the managing entity of it. We will, and you'll see on the management team, there is someone from the mayor's office. And there'll always be someone from the mayor's office to sit on that committee. Steve Kamara is on there. He's the art and culture liaison. Anyone else can actually sit on that committee. Like PM, yourself being economic development tourism. We don't have to keep it to just one. Because you wanna be involved in this to know the direction of it.
Right.
Because the cultural district is really what's gonna grow and spur the economic development. And it's gonna move its way up to Main Street at some point. And with the TDI program on Main Street, at some point, these two are just gonna connect, you know? So you've got us working on the cultural district, the TDI's working on that district. You know, just the combination of the two, I mean, it's like perfect timing to really kinda spur everything.
Okay.
So this is what you're proposing, but it's up to them to make the final decision?
They have to make, yeah, 'cause they're gonna walk it. And if they don't feel that it's walkable, then, and Louis, you can kinda, you can chime in on that. I'll let you, 'cause you know...
I wanted, I had that question, and the other question I have, so you can keep going, is what does this designation do for this district and the city?
Sure. Thank you. Thanks for the invitation and through the chair. Yes, I'll go back real quick to your initial question regarding the mayor's acceptance or not. You know, what we, one of the things that we require is a resolution from city council, specifically from city council. So although the letter was offered as a support letter, we wouldn't, we wouldn't accept that in lieu of a city council resolution because a city council resolution means that the city buys into this through its populace based on its representatives. So it, so, and I think that's where we're at now with this resolution first entered on July. And just to really quick go over some of the, some of the labels. When someone first applies, and I can't speak to the reasons that the Mass Cultural Council either want it or, you know, approached you first because we came, right? I came in September of last year. I started September 17th, my first interaction with Sandy was September 17th. Like, she was literally the first person that, like, we went back and forth. And we've been working together since then. I have walked the district. It's pretty incredible. Has both like Little C, Big C, and Culture, like with like the cultural district destination on Columbia, and then over to the waterfront. It's really beautiful. But we do ask when people, when stakeholders come, we ask them to initially create a cultural district partnership. And that partnership has to have at least one member of the local cultural council and other stakeholders. And those groups guide the application process to fruition. We go through a process. We do this formal site visit. And then at that point, it is a five-year designation. And five years is key because it's intended to overlap like political time because, so it's not like one elected official's pet project, right? We want this to be really a commitment and a buy-in from, from the municipality. But then we ask them at that point to create a management, a management entity. We don't prescribe it. Some people have a 501(c)(3). Some people do it out of their local cultural council. Some people might, there might be a Chamber of Commerce or Main Streets if it's within a, a main, a space that has a Main Street. In this case, there was conversation initially, maybe Narrows, and then settled on Can. We're fine with that. And, and that basically is to do the work. Once you receive a designation, and I notice Columbia Street is designated locally as a cultural district. And it's a designation like any designation. It's a state designation, so it means a little more. But it is what you make of it. Once you name it, then you can start promoting it. Then you can start, we do have signage that we're making available. We have 48 in the Commonwealth right now. We just, we just in August designated the most recent one in Winchester, Lenox. And we're currently looking at Framingham, Fitchburg. I just had a meeting this morning with Chicopee. And so it spans, and each municipality and town and city is different than the next. It, the boundaries and Sandy was gracious, like, and then the state decides. What we decide, we do ask for a space to be navigable by anything other than car. So wheelchair, so we used to say walkable, right? But yeah, like, you know, that you can kinda feel the edges. If you drop me off somewhere without knowing anything, without seeing a map, I can kinda see. We, we ask you to go through this exercise with the community about asset mapping. What are the assets? A lot of people don't list churches as assets. These days, assets, churches are making their space available for performances and the such. They become really great cultural assets. There's a really great, you know, space, an open space right next to the church on Columbia. A lot of people don't recognize libraries as one of the major cultural assets in a community, which they are, right? And you guys have an incredible library, a big free library on the southern side, that way. But yeah, but as far as what it brings, it brings what is brought into it. And that's why we ask this management entity to be comprised and, and to go through the non-paid volunteer work of just saying, what can we do to further shine on this space? That already has these incredible assets working, some together, but others like, you know, in a vacuum in their own. If they got together and say, what are you doing? How can we help that? What are we doing down at Gate? When, when is stuff happening? How can we stay open if we know this is happening? And that's really, there is no, that we, we make grants available to the cultural districts when, when, when we have the money, right? So we've been successful this year for our 48 to offer them a $6,000 mini grant, which last year we did $5,000. I, I made a copy of a funding list going back five years to just show how the Mass Cultural Council touches Fall River. And it goes from everything as basic as the big yellow school bus, which was 200 in 2015. It's now 250, where a teacher can just apply for 200, up to $250 to pay for a bus to take their children to a cultural destination. And then there's what the local cultural council allocation gets. Five, five years ago, we're looking at $62,000. This past year, 'cause there was a raise in our allocation, it was $98,000. I went to the local cultural council to grant out in, in the community. I'll just leave it here. Feel free...
That's a total statewide?
So no, that's specifically for Fall River. So along with, that was just that one, your local cultural council, what they received this year as opposed to like five years ago, it's a sixty-something thousand. It does not supersede any local zoning. So again, just a designation. And if you have an arts overlay district, that then helps with whatever local implications for someone to create, to have a creative business within that arts overlay district, then, then this doesn't supersede anything locally within a zoning conversation. I might be missing something. Does that cover a little?
It is. You were just asking if you were missing anything, but I was waiting for...
No, no, I said I might have missed something, like a question I'm trying to save.
No, no, I was wondering what, what the designation brings and why it would be good for the, for the city. So you need a resolution from the council? And is that the last piece of the application?
So the final piece of the application was kinda mentioned, which is a formal site review and a formal site visit. It, it involves us coming down with an independent advisor, site advisor, which we pay for. And that site advisor walks with us. Well, it's three parts. The first part is a meeting, a small meeting like this, like a working meeting with representatives from the city to ask pointed questions about the city. Do you have a cultural plan? Do you have, you know, your capital improvement plan? How, you know, going forward five years, are you doing anything towards the arts? Do you have an arts overlay district? In this case, you do. The package that we received from, from Culture Arts Network is impressive. And along with that, there's like a whole like public, public space binder. And like, it's, it's a really impressive binder. That first meeting is a working meeting with smaller stakeholders. Then we do an actual walk. We walk the district. This is with our executive director, site advisor, and myself, our program officer, Mina Kim, who's here with me, and anyone else who wants to participate in that. Those are opportunities where we might just ask, oh, look at this, some wonderful cement open space. Is there anything within the capital improvement plan to like work on this with your public space? And just ask those questions. And then we have a community, the last part is a community meeting for quote-unquote "the community", anyone who's, who comes. Everyone's invited, can ask Anita that very same question. What, you know, what does this mean for us? Some people, anytime something like this happens, we think it comes with tons and tons of dollars. And that's not the case here. So, so it is, in some places, it's just acknowledging the work that's happened. In other places, it's helping to get to a certain level. We might be, we're working with a community now that is not right there. My, and my kickback to my, my executive committee is, do we really wanna wait like seven years and wait till they, they've gotten there? And then say, okay, cool, you have it? Or do we wanna be part of that process? What, at what point, is this a tipping point to receive some extra funding from someone because you've had the designation? So that's the final part. We do opine, I've already given thoughts, my own thoughts on the size of the space. And I do have concerns with this bottom portion, like the left that you go down and it's like the big restaurant over there. But those are, I'm not a veto, you know, of any, that's just my feeling. This is a conversation, like I'll walk it with Mina. We'll do the walk. We'll talk about that internally. And then, and then we will, we will talk with the stakeholders. This is a city designation. So the designation lies with the city, not with the management entity. So one of the things that can be done is about local level is a memorandum of understanding with the group to say, hey, we have this designation. You know, we understand that you are the holders of, like, you will manage this respectfully and, and try to leverage it as best possible. And then, you know, then they can go seek grant funding for that. And then, you know, our hope, we feel really good about this district. We've, we meet, the council meets four times a year. That's when the actual vote happens. And we were planning on having, we are planning on having our, the January meeting in Fall River to be able to vote on that. And if it gets to the council level, that, you know, we're hoping that that, you know, chances are that's, that's what happens. Because then what we do at the end of the council, the council meeting, is have like a reception. It happens all the time. So I think it would mean a little more to have a reception at the same time that there's a designation and everyone comes and celebrates this. And then the work begins the next day. What does this mean? To answer your very simple question, and I went on for 15 minutes, so sorry.
That's okay. Council on?
Maybe you'll answer my question before I ask you.
But you can always ask. So just... Just the coffee on? So just to reiterate, you know, when they came, when they came to us back a number of years ago, that was five years ago, and Mary Jenks actually approached us and said, you know, we've been interested in Fall River. These, these cultural districts are growing throughout the Commonwealth. And this forty, it's 48 now, is it, Louis? So this 48, Fall River is one of the, is the only one, I think, down on the south coast that doesn't have one. I think Bedford does, Otten, I think does, Plymouth does. Otten's not yet? Plymouth does, Eastern, Citu, Eastern. So they said, you know, the last major city, last gateway city on the south coast, you know, is it something you'd be interested in? And we said yes. And one of the concerns was that this was gonna be an open and transparent process. And I think over the last five years, that's what we've tried to do. A lot of the sort of grunt work has been done, and it was a significant amount of it. Louis told you we brought, you know, binders up last Friday. It was a binder, planning documents and city documents. And so, and it did take quite a while to put all those documents together. But we're convinced that it is a real advantage to the city. It augments a lot of what's already going on in the city. It supports a lot of what's already happening in the city, a lot of good things that are happening in the city. And it does provide the city with an additional state designation that comes with really no liabilities and all advantages. So that's why we're hoping that, you know, the city council obviously will, will support the cultural district for the waterfront.
Louis, is there a timeline because of the next formal walk that's scheduled? Visit, so it needs to be voted on prior to the formal walk, really?
It, it would need to be voted on before, before January. A lot of times, depending on when your meeting is, you might take a December meeting off. So...
Twice a month?
So if, if you meet December, that's December. It doesn't need to be done before the, the walk. It does need to be done before. It is a checkbox, if you will. And it's my fault, 'cause I actually thought we had it on, but what I had was actually the agenda or the actual resolution that was proposed. And I, and I thought I didn't follow it to see that it was referred and not acted upon. 'Cause I would agree that like more, like, hey, this has to be acted upon. But since we're here and it's now, then yeah, it is one of the things. Because it is, it does, it symbolically says that Fall River wants to do this.
Mike, Mike, I'm all in favor of this. I think it's a great thing. But when I look at this fiscal year grants, you know, we started in 2015 with a 166, 650. Then the next year, it dropped to 95, 6. The year after that, it went up to 331, 3. And the year after that, it's 84, 7. Then 100, and the last one was 119. So I'm, I'm wondering if this would actually prevent that from happening so we get more money and keep it kinda level?
So no, I think what, what you, the fluctuation you're seeing is most likely with our cultural facilities funds. We see monies through mass development to administer to spaces that are cultural facilities. I'm pretty sure you'll see the Narrows there. And it's, you know, sometimes it's for elevator repair, right? It's for, you know, so, so those, those don't happen every year. And so if you see one, the 300,000, I wouldn't be surprised if, if you, if you'll see that it's a cultural facilities fund allotment. You'll also see sometimes if you have like an artist fellowship, those are $15,000 fellowships. And that might, that might be there. But if anything, at the very least, you'll see an increase on our end by being a cultural district when money's available of at the very least 5,000.
Fluctuating up and down like that?
Our money's finite and the cultural districts are not, right? We have 48, and so I, this year I had to...
As they grow, the pot gets smaller.
Well, no, we've, I, you know, I have to make the case to my executive director to keep the same funding. And this year, we asked for 5,000, and they wanted us to do something for Small Business Saturday, Saturday after Black Friday. And I said, I think they'll love it. Why don't you give them an extra thousand? And they, they gave me that. So this year, we're making $6,000 available, which again, is a mini grant. But my background is in small nonprofit arts work. I can move mountains with $6,000. So, you know, I think, you know, people are used to like doing really great stuff with a little, so.
Do you yield council?
Do you? Quickly, so in term of, in terms of process, so I know we need a resolution. So would this district be voted on by the, did you say it was the Arts Council or the Historical Council?
Mass Cultural Council.
Oh, so locally, there's no, so none of those?
No, just you, you have the council, has to.
We just propose it with their guidance, and essentially the team comes down and says, yes, we like it, meets all the requirements, and then...
Gotcha, okay. So the resolution would be based on this layout being submitted, okay? So the resolution would be based on this layout being submitted, okay. That was, that was the only thing I was a little concerned about, I wanted to make sure that if we were gonna submit a resolution, that we knew exactly what the final district was looking like before we submitted the resolution.
So think of all the way from top of Columbia Street, that...
Yeah, no, I see that, I just, for some strange reason, I misunderstood Sandy when she, when she mentioned Massachusetts Arts Cultural, Arts Council with the local council.
Oh, yeah, oh, no.
This is, this is what we're proposing, but they'll have the final vote.
Okay.
Well, there's the resolution that's in front of us right now, is that, does that serve the purpose?
So you need to vote on it as a...
No, we have to vote on it, but if this resolution were...
The one that I wrote, from New York.
And that's all, because all we have to do is send this up to the council, right?
Yeah, Sandy had given me what other communities had voted on, and then we tailored it to make it...
So Steve's point that that, this resolution is what's in committee?
What's before us. I'll make a motion to send it to full council.
Second.
I just have a couple of questions. Are you also on your end, Mrs. Paveras, with all the questions that you had asked and Corporation Council had asked?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, we, we just had some logistical questions about it and wanted to know if there was any additional requirement, but we're satisfied based on the responses that were provided.
And then the memorandum of understanding would be between the city and the Creative Arts Network?
Yes, and I haven't seen the resolution, but I presume it's simply embracing the... Yeah, so...
I think it's one that's been used before.
We just, we had to just tailor it to...
Yeah, I think they just, with a template, they just customize it to the local...
Oh, this was your actual resolution? Oh, I understood, yeah, certainly, we've seen this one, certainly, so. We just wanted to be certain that, that the structure, and I am, this is the first I've seen of the management team, I think it's a good cross-section, so...
And more people can be added.
Yeah, so we just wanted to be sure that there was a good representation of all community participants who are interested in the arts and culture, to make sure everyone felt like it was being very inclusive, and as I said, this does look like a nice cross-section. So I know that the, the chamber is working on a new arts and culture group. Mr. Sullivan, do you want to just give us a quick update on that?
Just let me start by saying that the chamber absolutely supports the arts and culture. It's important that everybody clearly understand that. And we have been working, and Dave and Sandy have come to some of the meetings, trying to just build a group that collaborates and can find more ways to just grow the arts and culture community. We'd like to see more things like the Fabric Festival that just happened a couple weeks ago, which was just phenomenal for the city. So, and, and that's really what we're looking, looking to do and to try to make happen. But I think that a cultural district like this will help the city tremendously, it'll be, it's just another piece of the foundation that will help us really bring everybody together and try to make things grow. So if you do vote, if the council does vote, we greatly appreciate that.
So, thank you. The resolution, as I put it in, was to send it to this committee to be discussed, so I think the motion would have to be to draft the agreement necessary. Some of the wording is in this, but we have already adopted this, but that was to send it here. So I, I think the motion would be to draft the...
Okay, motion to draft, I guess. I'm, I'm in favor, I, I think the resolution stands on its own.
Except it was just to send it here, to have all these people at the table and send it here for discussion?
So the template resolution is, is good to go? The language is perfect and what we need?
Yeah, the template, that, yeah, I got the template from Louis.
Do you have the template?
I can get, I can get it from Louis.
I understood, Madam Chairperson, exactly that, that your resolution was going to get us to this committee, so if there's a formal resolution, it would be helpful for us to have that vote.
So it's just gonna take a more motion, refer if we had it, if we also...
And we have motion to table, then, right? Let's go to another meeting.
And then what I'll do is I'll email it to...
Let me ask, because that template, as I remember, needed some pieces of it changed. Could we, Madam Clerk, if we have that, can we draft it? Can we send a recommendation to the council that it's drafted and we can vote on it at our next council meeting? We don't have to come back here?
No, we could just, we can do a grant, leave to withdraw and just have Sandy, have Sandy forward the resolution.
Present it as a...
And then when it gets to full council, we'll just tell them that we don't need it to get referred, because we've already had a conversation.
And we can vote on it. Will you forward me the, the template again?
I'll send it to all...
It's just gonna be passed before January, before January.
We can do it at our next meeting.
So you've got plenty of time.
Okay.
Okay. So, whatever you just said.
So we're gonna give this discussion, leave to withdraw.
Yeah, grant, motion, grant, leave to withdraw.
And I will get...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So voted, and I will get the letter on our next agenda, and it can be voted on there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Could I ask a little question?